So if you can bring it in by tomorrow, like your mileage or any receipts for meals, then we can process and check.
This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs City Council will come to order. Madam Pluckett, would you please stand your corner?
James DeVito.
Here.
Erin Lindblad.
Here.
Ken Pownal.
Here.
Mr. Berry.
Here.
Lady Balance.
On the air.
Dr. Raphael.
Here.
All right, we have a corner.
Yes, sir.
Everybody, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next will be approval of the agenda.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Tanner.
Two additions on the Cemetery Commission, position two. We need to be voting on nominate Miss Gloria Stevens. And under unfinished business number one, that needs to be postponed until the sign ordinance is approved.
Until...
Until the sign ordinance is approved.
Second.
Madam Seconded. Number one, nonconforming officers signed. Oh, new business, I'm sorry. Madam Seconded.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to add to this agenda an executive session at the end of new business and before agenda setting.
Second.
Okay, executive session is number nine under new business, after number eight, before agenda setting. Madam Seconded. Yes, sir.
I would like to add an executive session following that. Second.
Madam Seconded. It will be number 10 under new business. Any further? Mr. Tanner.
Move to per the agenda submitted.
Second.
Madam Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Agenda's approved. Next will be approval of the minutes for June the 11th, 2012.
Move to per second.
Any changes, deletions, additions? Any of those? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm standing.
Minutes are approved for June the 11th. Next will be commission committee authority reports and expired terms. Do you have anybody here for planning, speak for planning? I don't have anything on the list. No? Next will move on to CAPC. I don't have anything for CAPC. Under hospital, we have a vote on Ms. Pam Crockett and Mary Jean Sell. They were nominated last session. They're up for vote this time. Yes, sir.
I'd move to nominate Pam Crockett for position four on the hospital commission.
She's already been nominated.
Approve, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Second.
Madam Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Sorry. So we got... Forward to it, yes.
For the record, can we show the correct expression date for that position on the record? So we don't get prepped on the act of what we have in the past.
Got a change on the next agenda?
Okay. So we had a four, one, and one? Uh huh, I believe that's correct.
Okay, I did not hear the vote clearly then. You were nay?
Nay.
Abstain.
I abstain.
Thank you.
So we had two abstains?
Thank you.
Abstains and three yays? Okay, so abstain's a no vote?
Four yays is two abstains.
So it carries.
Four yays is a no.
Miss Crockett's? Okay.
Let's try this again.
Go through them all again, yeah.
The vote for Pam Crockett.
Yes.
Mr. Tanner.
Ah.
Okay. Just balance.
Abstain.
Okay. Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Mr. Lindblad.
No.
Okay. Okay, so...
So we have four yays and two nos.
Yeah, three yays.
Three yays.
Three yays, abstains, and one nay, so it's a tie.
No.
Yeah, two and one.
And the nays work. And... And care. Okay, thank you for your patience.
Okay, so the yes vote, got it.
Three, two, one. If you vote.
Vote yes. Okay, Mary Jean Sell will be the next one. Mr. DeVito.
Move to appoint Mary Jean Sell to the hospital commission, position six.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
No.
I understand.
Let's do one at a time.
Ms. Lindblad.
No.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
May I address? I'm sorry, we didn't get a chance for comments.
We're already into the vote.
I'm sorry?
We're already into the vote.
Okay, well...
Robert Fuel says no.
So James's vote is?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Balance.
No.
Mr. Tanner. Mr. Parker, now.
Two yays, four nos.
Okay. Miss Sell didn't make it. Next on Parks. Don't have anything. HTC, Mr. Vote on Dan Hebert, yes, ma'am.
As regards Parks, we just got the report. And one of the bullets here says, "The Preservation Society is requesting permission to place a small limestone marker identifying Conway Springs located behind the downtown Cornerstone Bank." I would like a little more information on that. And are we supposed to approve that?
This is the first I've heard about that.
Okay, well, it does say... State statute, ACA 1443-502, powers of council generally, B1, states that council shall have management and control of finances and of all the real and personal property belonging to the corporation. So if the Preservation Society wants to place a limestone marker, it occurs to me that it might be appropriate to have it come before this body to approve.
Good to know, Parks. Next is HTC, vote on Dan Hebert. Yes, ma'am.
Diane told me that he requested that we don't call him till June 30th, that he's out of town on vacation.
He is on vacation.
So I did not call him.
Okay. Mr. Tanner.
Postponed until the first July meeting. Second.
Madam Seconded, postpone the first of July. First meeting in July. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next to be cemetery, will be a vote on Miss Gloria Stevens, nominated last time. Mr. Tanner.
Move to appoint Gloria Stevens to position two.
Second.
Madam Seconded, all in favor, yes, sir.
I'd like to point out for those that maybe either didn't get a hold of her or haven't been able to talk to the individual, she has served voluntarily on the unification committee for the Cemetery Commission. She's also, if anybody's been by the cemetery lately, spent a lot of time and effort soliciting local companies for plans and things. Spent her own time out there planning and taking care of them. I think that speaks well for a volunteer that's not even on the commission yet. So I highly recommend a positive vote.
Okay. The vote is on. Vote is on.
The vote is down.
Okay, all in favor of Mrs. Stevens, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Stevens is on. Mary Jean, you have a report.
Do I recognize her?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may make a comment before you begin. I'm so proud of the Cemetery Commission for everything they're trying to do, for the event that they put on, for taking care of our cemetery. I'm just, I'm so proud of you and I'm so thankful for you. That's all. Thank you very much. I'm Mary Ann Pownell with the Cemetery Commission. I serve at the capacity secretary treasurer. And I'm here to just give our quarterly report, which is unfortunately overdue, and I do apologize for that. Number one, I do want to thank Gloria Stevens for all of her hard work and effort. For all of you sitting in this room and out there in TV land, take a drive by the cemetery and just see the beauty of it and the shrubs that Gloria's been planting and flowers. And I want to thank so many people in this area. I'm thinking of Little Bear Creek Nursery. They have contributed some foliage and Sunfest. It's just tremendous how nice it's looking out there, and we do thank you. Want to give a special thanks to Dean Fanning for coming out in June and taking down three of our trees that were in danger of destroying some historic headstones. And he did that voluntarily with no monetary compensation, understanding how broke we are. So, thank you, Dean. By no way negates just our everyday worker, Tom, who's out there every morning, every evening, just making sure everything is secure. Aside from that, I do want to just give you a quick, quick update. I'm not going to take long. I don't know if it's the economy or what, but as of this time last year, we had already sold 14 graves. The commission had 14 graves sold. And this year, we are at a total of four. I don't know if you know that the cemetery solely exists only on the funds that we receive from the selling of plots. And to say we're in dire straits, I'm not going to sit here and cry about money. I've done that to you too many times already. But we are in dire straits, we just don't have any money. But we are muddling through, we always do. But just to let you know that we only have sold four graves since January 1st of 2012. Tom Reynolds is now our new acting cemetery sexton. We're asking everybody out there and at this table, please, if you do know of anybody who needs any plot sales or is interested in plots or just needs to know where certain sections are, to call Tom, and his number is 244-7659. Tom has graciously allowed himself to be part of this because we did lose Mr. Archie Ryan, who was our previous sexton. So Tom has stepped into his shoes, and he's doing a marvelous job, and we want to thank him for that. In February, the commission did vote to raise the rates of the plots. The new rate is $485 for the plot. Now, there is a $15 filing fee, and we are asking for that at the time of purchase, plus $100 for cornerstone. So the total price per plot is $600. Now, the filing fee, it's one time, it's $15 if you buy one plot, if you buy 10 plots. So the commission did take a vote to do that, and we have been charging the new $600 rate. The quarterly financials, I do apologize to this table. I have not been able to get them done as yet because we had to pay off Windell and Associates for finishing up the 2011 quarterly financials. I just got that done last week, paying them up. So now Windell will be able to start the 2012 first quarter financials. I promise you will have them later than mid-July. Our ending operating balance as of June 1st was $1,512.86. Our savings balance as of June 1st, 2012, is $554.81. Any questions?
You're right.
What was the phone number of Tom?
59, okay.
7659.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? And thank you, Landon, for your kind words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Tom did also want to give a quickie report here.
Tom.
I did want to just give a quick update to the council on the sales of plots. We have sold four plots this year. We have block 16, block 15, 11 have been internments that were already purchased by families. And we have recently opened, I cleared and opened, block 27. And have sold two plots in block 27. We have an entire block of 52 with only one plot in it. And we're getting, I'm getting ready to clear out another one. So if anybody asks if we have no plots available, right off hand, we have around 300. And that's going to grow as we clear back and open up more of the area around it. Also, the deeper we go into our records, we find vacant spots that were never purchased in the middle of other family plots. Most of them are individual, but we do have plots available. There was a rumor going around that we had none. And we have, just, we have plots available. Three full blocks, if anyone asks. Thank you very much.
Anybody? Ms. Balance.
I hope that the Cemetery Commission intends to submit a requisition for some funds on next year's budget. And hopefully, the city council will see fit to free up some funds for the cemetery. I know you're operating on a shoestring, and I think this city can do better. So I do encourage you to submit a requisition. Thank you.
And we do appreciate the council's support that you have given us over the past few years. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Thank you. Okay. Next will be yellowback research committee. Ms. Balance.
Have nothing for the moment. This is on the agenda later, and we'll just discuss it then. Thank you.
Deer hunt report.
Oh, go ahead. Are you going to make a statement? For the deer hunt report? Okay, go ahead.
We did have a deer hunt committee meeting. No council member showed up. We did answer Ms. Lindblad's questions. Our city toward immunity is our insurance. We don't have any, we don't have a dog in the hunt, per se. It's up to the property owners and the hunters to deal with any issues that come about as a result of a mistake. A hunter has to be 10 foot off the ground in a deer stand, 50 yards away from any residence before they can hunt. So making a mistake, let a stray arrow hit the dog, because within, it's usually within 30 feet is what an archer shoots a deer. So if they can't tell a dog from a deer, then they don't need to be hunted. And it's 50 yards from the house. In the city, it says they're supposed to be restrained within the city, within the property, their own leash. So it's a property owners issue if a dog does hit. As far as the... What was your other question?
I don't remember, but I've got a bunch more.
Did you run it up in somebody's yard?
Yeah, with an arrow in it.
Oh, okay. If an injured deer goes onto somebody else's property, off the property that they're being hunted on, the property owner can give the hunter permission to go on there. If not, the hunter can contact Game &amp; Fish. Game &amp; Fish will go retrieve the deer and get it to the hunter.
Did you say 50 yards from another?
I think it's...
Is it?
Diane, is it 50 yards? I think it's 50 yards. So that's further from here to the auditorium. Yes, ma'am.
Is any of the meat harvested going to be processed and made available to the food bank or anything like that?
That will be up to the hunter.
That would be a really nice gesture for this city to...
It would be, but the hunter would have to incur the cost of it. It wouldn't be the city's issue.
Wouldn't be the city's issue, even though we're putting on the hunt. We could possibly appropriate some funds for something like that. That would be a really good goodwill gesture on the part of the community. Since we are putting an imposition on the citizens and the tourists and businesses.
Well, the citizens voted for it, that's all. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. According to what the citizens voted for, they voted for a hunt promulgated and timed set by the Arkansas Game &amp; Fish Commission within the area prescribed by Arkansas Game &amp; Fish. Did they do that? Or have they picked out the time and have they picked out the places?
It'll be September through...
I know the time, but who decided on the time? It's my question. I have a schedule of the time.
Will you ask me a question so I'm...
Okay.
Can I do that?
Sure.
So you asked me a question.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for your permission to do so.
You're welcome.
Okay.
But if you want to discuss, I'd prefer you...
No, ma'am, I don't want to discuss. And you're out of order. You're recognized.
Point of order, then.
Point of order, state your point of order.
If you want to engage in discussion, it would be appropriate for you to relinquish the chair.
Okay, I'm not going to relinquish the chair.
Then you need not to...
Then you need to address your question to her, because she's asking me a question. I'm going to answer it. Mr. DeVito.
This is a non-voting matter. You have appropriate authority to comment.
Yes, I know. Okay, we're ready.
Well, I asked if Game &amp; Fish set the time and the place for this, and you started telling me the dates.
Yes, September through February, Diane? Yes, that's right.
The dates are, I have them written down here. My question was, did Arkansas Fish and Game choose the time and the areas prescribed? That was my question.
Now, okay. They gave us the opportunity to pick the times, and those were the best times.
Why were those the best times?
For optimum effect. To harvest more deer. That is the purpose of this hunt, is to harvest deer.
I understand that. Okay, I have another question. Why was it decided not to do the protocol that Game &amp; Fish offers for this urban deer hunt protocol? Why was it decided? Because on this protocol, the hunters have to pass an international bow hunting education course, attend an urban hunt orientation. After attending the orientation, hunters will be eligible to hunt all urban deer for that year. They have to pass a shooting proficiency test, and they have to pay an annual confirmation fee, which includes memberships, membership in the ABA for liability insurance purposes, which would take it off of the property owner. And they also, according to their rules, provide a vehicle placard that must be signed by the representative for each hunter, and the hunter has to display that in their vehicle. And this is what was decided not to do by the city. And I'm wondering why the city decided to run this hunt instead of having Game &amp; Fish run it under this protocol with the Arkansas Bow Hunters Association.
Okay, you spoke to Mr. Gray.
I did speak to Mr. Gray.
He recommended that we go with a club hunt.
That's not what he told me today. He told me that the city decided to go with the club hunt.
Yeah, we were given the opportunity to pick this one, which we never got the people down there to be certified to do so, or this one, the club hunt.
Well, you say we would have never gotten people, but they do this all over the place, and they get plenty of hunters because it includes everybody in the state of Arkansas.
Okay, as of the town that we chose to do this, they had not decided where to have the orientation at. And we needed to get this thing done and out so we could get the hunters and the property owners in line.
Okay, we got this map. It's a map of the whole city, and I have had several citizens call me and ask questions. First of all, how are the hunters supposed to know where they can hunt?
There'll be a list of private property where they can hunt. They'll have to contact the owners themselves. We don't do that.
Yes, but how will they know the boundaries of the property?
It's up to the property owner to tell them.
And what about people who don't want them on their property?
Then they won't be on the property.
Well...
It's only an agreement between the hunter and the property owner.
I understand that, but I have...
They won't hunt on that property.
I have lived here for a very long time, and it is very difficult in this town to tell where property lines are, especially when you get into the hollows where nobody lives. So how are they going to know what's what as far as property? And I've had people call me and ask me this. Are they going to have to post their property? Which I don't think should be their responsibility.
The property owners shouldn't post their own...
The ones that don't want hunters on their property. And how are the hunters going to know?
I can't answer that question, but I'm just answering the question with the information I have.
Well, don't you think that's a pretty important question for people that don't want hunters on their property?
Well, then it's up to the property owner that gives the hunter permission to make sure they stay on their property.
So they're going to follow them around? Or they're going to stand by...
They're not required to do so.
Please let her finish her sentences.
Another question is, I have wondered, how many citizens have signed up so far to have...
We've had 14 hunters on about 32 properties.
Okay. Because this vote only lost by 79 votes. So it means the majority, which is 9.10%, which means the majority of owners of property in this town, citizens were not at all in favor of this hunt happening. Let's see. Okay, when they can't hunt within, it's actually 150 feet of a property, they still want to know how they're going to know, how the hunter's going to know when they're over their boundary or not? For the people who signed up for it.
It'll be up to the property owner to tell them what the boundaries are.
But you don't have...
It's not up to us.
You don't have any rules. Well, this is being sponsored by the city. This is being sponsored by the city, but the city's taking no responsibility for protecting citizens and their property who do not want these hunters on it?
How do we do that? Explain it to me.
I don't know. I would think that would be something that the deer committee would want to decide. Maybe tell the people who want it on their property that they have to post their property for the hunters. I don't know.
We can't tell them to post it. We can't tell someone to post their property or not to post it. We don't have that right.
But you have, you have the right to say that we can have a deer hunt in town.
No. The citizens said that.
Yeah, they did, they did. But how are we going to protect people that don't want them on their property?
If they report it, if they get on their property, then we'll deal with it as an issue.
So they're going to have to be out there on their property while the hunters are hunting, being sure that the hunters don't come on their property? Is that what they're supposed to do?
It's up to the property owner that lets the hunter hunt to make sure they stay on their property.
And how will we know if that's a done or not?
And you're interrupting me now.
Oh, sorry.
Is that okay?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. It's up to the property owner and the hunter to work these issues out. It's not up to us.
Okay, you know, I mean, we'll see what happens with this whole thing because it's a... You know, I mean, we'll see what happens with this whole thing because it's, it's...
I just want it done and over with.
To me, it's a pretty crazy setup, and there's a lot of people upset because, because they're saying that they did not vote for a five-month deer hunt. And the other thing that I wanted to bring up was, the deer hunt dates are from, this is the Chamber of Commerce book, the deer hunt dates are from September fifteenth to October first. There's one, two, three, four events that take place in those dates, five events in the city. Because they, I've been told, well, there's this little break so people can rush in and look at the leaves. Then there's this whole page, I don't know if you want it, of events in November that are going to happen in town where we're inviting people to come here. And then there are, from last year, and I'm assuming it will be the same, there's a whole another page of events all through February that are going to have...
Point of order.
...hunting.
State your point of order, sir.
This should be an agenda topic if we're going to go into this lengthy debate. We have a long list. We have guests here tonight. You're engaging one person at a disproportionate length of time. I would like to move along with the agenda. If this wants to be an agenda item, we've got six months till the hunt.
Point well taken.
Fine, then I move that we make this an agenda item, that we add this to our next agenda.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of Ed?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
One, two.
Add it to the agenda if they don't need to be...
But we're not in the agenda sitting.
Then we'll put it at the end.
Next is public comment. First on the list is Kristi Kendrick. Ms. Kendrick, you have the floor.
Hello, I'm Kristi Kendrick, and I represent Brad and Deborah Hill, who live behind the Cafe Santa Fe. And there is an agenda item on tonight addressing the vacation of Vine Street. I believe that the form that it's in right now is of vacating only the street that is actually under the restaurant. We have another proposal to vacate Vine Street between my client's property and the Cornerstone property that we would like to have considered. I would first like to let you know that Parks looked at this at their last meeting a week ago, and they have rescinded the prior motion that they passed concerning the vacation of the footprint and made another recommendation that endorsed an agreement that my client has gotten, along with two other homeowners that join or are in the immediate vicinity, and tentatively Cornerstone Bank. But Cornerstone Bank has not yet endorsed the agreement. So we are opposed to the motion whereby just the footprint be vacated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mary Ann Pennell? Yep, okay. Susan Tharp? She must be out in the hall. Come on in, Susan.
Guys, I just wanted to tell you thank you so much for letting me speak last week. That was very, very kind of you. And I just wanted to let you know that I will be here during the, when it's on the agenda tonight again. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. I'll be here once again, and once again, thank you very much. I'm very appreciative for y'all giving me that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Landrum. Tom, Tom Forgos, he spoke a moment ago. Okay. Jerry, Jerry. Hi, Jerry.
Good evening.
Come on in.
Hi, Jerry Landrum, nineteen, Kimberling. I want to thank, thank y'all again for the opportunity to be here. I want to encourage council to adopt the climate action plan tonight. I think it's a balanced plan of policies and projects to help meet the greenhouse gas reduction goals. And in addition to that, I think it's going to help us out with some other things over time. The economic uncertainty still hangs out there, so the more we tighten up as a community, the, the better we're going to be in uncertain economic times. And the environmental stresses continue to escalate. I mean, this is kind of a mega heat wave here. And, you know, if it gets dry, and it's pretty dry already, I talked to the county forester. He's expecting a long, hot summer. You know, we, we could get in trouble there. And, and, and also the, the economy, insulation jobs, they, they have to be local. And any of the efficiency upgrades, that's jobs for the local people. So I encourage you to, to adopt that tonight. Thank you very much.
That'll be all the public comment. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Number one's been postponed. We'll go to number two, auditorium commission ordinance for referendum.
Move to discuss.
Second.
In second floor, so, Mr. Gray.
I guess I'm not sure if this came up the last meeting where I wasn't, wasn't there or not, but I don't remember putting the auditorium commission ordinance up for referendum.
Okay.
I mean, as this, as a states in the agenda.
I only have the last minutes. I don't have the batch before, so I can't answer your question.
I mean, this is what we want to do, is put the ordinance to establish an auditorium commission up to a vote of the people.
You can change it if you want to.
Well, I'm not, I'm, and it's just a question on, on the agenda. I'm not sure why this, why it's stated for referendum.
Mr. DeVito. That's not been the direction that council has taken, and I agree. I don't know how it, it's worded in that manner. It's always been a discussion of establishing an auditorium commission. There was some talk of possible quarter cent tax, but I don't endorse that. I don't know if Mr. Berry endorses that, but that has, it's always been the establishment of an auditorium commission.
Mr. Griffin.
It seemed like, it seemed like that was the point, the quarter cent sales tax. It seems like at the meetings we had with the auditorium, it seemed like if they weren't getting the quarter cent sales tax, there was no, there was no need for another commission. I mean, commissions in the past have not worked. It might work with a quarter cent sales tax. That was my understanding of it.
Mr. Gray.
I believe what, what we, and again, we, we've kind of dragged on with this, but my understanding is from the, the committee wanted to establish, their recommendation was to establish an auditorium commission. I think that's number one. If what we're running into, as in with a lot of commissions, and we're seeing it with, with the cemetery commission, if there's no money available to fund a commission and for them to operate and run in some manner, then chances are it's going to be doomed to failure. Now, I think what their suggestion was, was to put it up, the quarter cent sales tax for referendum, not the auditorium commission, but the sales tax to the people, if the people want to do this and want to support the auditorium in another manner. That way, that would give the auditorium a funding source that would pay for the utility bills, pay for maintenance, pay for capital improvements. That would need, we needed to go in there without it coming out of the city's expenditures. And I think that's where the, the sales tax issue came up to. Again, this would just bring it up to the commission to see, you know, where, I mean, up to the council, it's to where the council wants to go with it. There's two separate items. One, establishing an auditorium commission, and two, what the council feels on putting up for referendum a quarter cent sales tax, or some sort of sales tax to support the auditorium.
Mr. DeVito.
Well, there's been an incredible change with the auditorium since discussions of auditorium commission were occurring last year. And the fact is that they've increased bookings in the auditorium tenfold. We're now looking at over a hundred and fifty bookings this year. This, that's unique in the history of the auditorium. I personally feel that, you know, some of the concerns of funding for the auditorium may be addressed by the usage of the auditorium. I'd like to wait till the end of the year and see what the ledger says, because we've never had an opportunity to have this many bookings in the auditorium as we're presently experiencing. We may end up, you know, in the black at the end of the year. I think we're in that direction. There's, there's been a great change with the auditorium, and I think a lot of the thinking that went in, I'm, I'm still in favor of an auditorium commission, don't get me wrong on that. I'm, I'm not in favor of a tax. I would like to see at the end of the year how we've done with, you know, this incredible increase in bookings in the auditorium.
Anybody else? Want to make a motion to separate the two, or how do you want to do it?
Well, what I would do is, I would make a motion in that we have an ordinance, and we already have an ordinance, had had one in the past. I have our city attorney look at it to bring back to the council an ordinance establishing an auditorium commission.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Was there a third no?
There was a fourth no.
Four, two.
Okay, I, all right. I'd like to do real call in this.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
No, no?
No.
Doubts?
No.
Mr. Pennell?
Standing.
Just turn to your right field.
No.
And Berry was a yes.
Yes.
Three noes, excuse me, two yeses, three noes, one abstention.
Okay. Here's the one we do, question to me again.
To have an ordinance reviewed by the attorney for the establishment of an auditorium commission.
Okay.
And it's three, two, one.
Yes.
No, two, three, one.
It's two, three.
Two, three. Two, two yeses.
Two, four, three against, one abstention, which makes it four, two.
Okay, I'm going to go out in the parking lot and get my brain. I'll be right.
So I can vote.
Two, three, one. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to number three, animal drawn vehicle ordinance.
Second.
Floor is open.
I would move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading. Second.
Then we assign an ordinance number five fourteen.
Uh, we have not, uh, I don't think so, because there was a discussion about those two sections having been left.
It's just going to be amended.
This would be important.
Yes.
And we don't have a number for it.
Okay.
Okay. Turn commission. Does everybody have a copy? Is the one that dated six twenty-five twelve, is that the, is this the one? That's today. Okay, so this other one is, no one's voting.
This one should have T and S inserted back there.
It won't be under those letters.
The letters shifted.
Shifted off.
Okay, so this will, oh, we didn't vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Excuse me, what's the motion, please?
Motion is to add a number and read for discussion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Place it on its first reading.
First reading. Once again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That was six zero, right?
Yeah, it looks like the same one.
Okay.
Oh, wait.
The ordinance will be two, one, five, four. An ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter twenty-eight of the Eureka Springs, Arkansas Municipal Code. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has made a comprehensive study and review of the current Title IV, Chapter twenty-eight of the Eureka Springs, Arkansas Municipal Code, and whereas the council believes that changes are necessary to better provide proficient operation of future animal drawn vehicle franchises, now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section One. That subsection four point two eight point oh one is hereby amended as follows. The following definition shall be added. Carriages refers to any animal drawn vehicle used for hire within the corporate city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. The following definition shall be amended as follows. Depot means a fixed location where the city, in concert with the chief of police, has authorized a holder of an animal drawn vehicle franchise to park animal drawn vehicles for hire out of service awaiting a passenger and is considered the primary point of picking up and dropping off passengers. Section two, that subsection four point two eight point oh four is hereby amended to read as follows. Four point two eight point oh four, permit and fee. Before any person or business shall have one or more animal drawn vehicles operated for hire in the public, on the public streets and ways within the city, such person or business shall pay an application fee of three hundred and fifty dollars to the finance department of the city and shall file with the city clerk an application for a franchise. Franchise applications deemed complete and accurate by the city clerk will be presented to the city council for consideration. No franchise shall be granted to any applicant whose application is found to be incomplete or inaccurate. It shall be grounds for revocation of an approved franchise if the application is discovered to be incomplete or inaccurate after approval. Each application presented to the clerk must be verified by oath setting forth the following information. A, that the applicant is able to comply with the ordinances of the city and the laws of the state. B, that the applicant has a policy of liability insurance in force or a valid binder for such policy with respect to the business enterprise in which the animal drawn vehicles are employed, wherein the minimum policy limits are ten thousand, twenty thousand, and five thousand dollars, and agrees to maintain such liability insurance in force if the permit is issued. Applicant shall attach proof of such liability insurance policy or binder to the application. C, the trade name of the business enterprise of the applicant, the name and address of each partner if a partnership, and the name and address of each officer, director, and shareholder if a corporation. D, a list with full attached, with attached full color photos of the animal drawn vehicles proposed for use by the applicant, setting forth the style, type of construction, and passenger seating capacity of each animal drawn vehicle, including the dimensions of the carriages. No carriage shall be more than five and three-quarter feet long at its, three-quarter feet across at its widest point, and no more than eleven and one-half feet long, not including the animal and its harnessing apparatus. Each shall be pulled exclusively by one animal unless otherwise approved specifically by the city council prior to use. All carriages shall have at least one rear view mirror and be equipped with a horn or other approved warning device capable of emitting a warning sound audible at forty feet under normal conditions. Carriages shall be equipped with a fifth wheel or cut under turning mechanism on the front axle to better allow operation in the narrow and curvy streets of Eureka Springs. The application shall include a statement regarding the ownership of all carriages and whether any or all are subject to liens, and if so, in favor of whom. E, a list of the animals proposed for use by the applicant in conjunction with the animal drawn vehicles, the age of each animal, the physical health of each animal as verified by a veterinarian licensed by the state, and a statement as to the ownership of each animal and as to whether such ownership is subject to any lien or security agreement, and if so, in favor of whom. F, a complete statement of all facts pertaining to the experience, qualifications, and financial responsibility of the applicant and the... responsibility of the applicant, and the ability of the applicant to operate the proposed business enterprise. G, the specify, the specific proposed hours of operation of the proposed business enterprise. H, each application shall provide a depot address in addition to a specific list of other drop off and pickup point addresses for the proposed routes of the proposed enterprise. The proposed schedule of rates is to be charged by the applicant, of rates to be charged by the applicant while conducting the proposed business enterprise. What do you like to read?
J, the names, ages, and addresses of the proposed drivers of each animal drawn vehicle, and the training and experience of each driver with respect to the driving of an animal drawn vehicle. Should be appeared, I guess.
It's not his sense.
K, that the applicant is aware that there will be no more than three franchises operating within the city limits, unless otherwise approved by city council upon finding that the available business justifies the addition of a greater number. L, that the applicant is aware no person or business can own more than two franchises, nor more than two thirds of an exclusive routes allowable for use by animal drawn vehicles operated for hire. M, that the applicant is aware each franchise holder will provide to and maintain with the police department, I'm sorry, police chief, okay, a current list of at least two emergency phone numbers of persons who can take temporary responsibility for the animals and/or animal drawn vehicles. N, that the applicant is aware that each franchisee is granted an exclusive route which cannot be shared, crossed, or otherwise infringed upon by any other franchise without an approval in writing by the police chief and the franchise holders due to safety and traffic concerns. This pro, this provision shall not apply to any participation to any franchise in any city approved rate. O, that the applicant is aware that each franchise shall only be allowed one to four approved four carriages. P, that the applicant is aware that no carriage shall be operated by any franchise holder upon US Highway sixty-two or Main Street between the Soper Museum and the junction of Main Street and U, and Capitol US should be, Capitol U S, Highway sixty-two, unless occupied by police escort or part of a special event.
Unless accompanied?
Ms. Bellin?
You said occupied, it's unless accompanied?
A US Highway sixty-two unless accompanied by police escort as a part of a special event. Q, that the applicant is aware that due to traffic and safety concerns, no carriage shall be allowed to operate before four P M. within the city limits unless occupied, I'm sorry, accompanied by police escort as part of a special event. Section three, that subsection four point two eight point oh five is hereby amended by adding the following sentence. If at any time after a franchise is granted, the franchise's application is found to be inaccurate or incomplete or otherwise ineligible, the franchise may be suspended and/or revoked by majority vote of the city council. Section four, that subsection four point two eight point oh six is hereby amended to read as follows. Four point two eight point oh six, change of hours, routes, rates. Vehicles can be operated only on streets which have been pre-approved by the city council and the chief of police. Each franchisee is to operate within their own designated routes as approved. No animal drawn vehicles are to be permitted on Spring Street before five P M. or after midnight unless pre-approved by the chief of police with the exception, yes.
We have four P, I have four P.
I do as well.
I think you've got an old copy maybe, because U S is capitalized on hours.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to use this one?
Yeah, I'll use this one.
Okay.
Change of hours.
Start off at four twenty-eight oh six again.
Four twenty-eight point oh six, four point two eight point oh six, change of hours, rates, routes, and rates. Vehicles can be operated only on streets which have been pre-approved by the city council and the chief of police. Each franchisee is to operate within designated routes as approved. No animal drawn vehicles are to be permitted on Spring Street before four P M. or after midnight unless pre-approved by the chief of police with the exception of parades. No carriage operator shall use trailer stop stands as points of pickup or drop off of passengers. Franchisees shall make no changes in the routes to be followed, including points of boarding, disembarking, departure, or termination, which were set forth in the hearing on the application unless each such change is approved by the city council at a regular meeting. Section five, subsection four point two eight point oh eight is hereby amended as follows. The phrase pre-established route termini is hereby replaced by the word depot. Section six, the following subsection shall be added to Title IV, Section twenty-eight. Animals, no animal shall work for more than eight consecutive hours or ten hours with a one and one half hour break disconnected from the carriage in a twenty-four hour period. No animal shall be worked more than six days in a seven day period. That should be a seven day period, correct? Everybody make that addition, seven day period. The animal control officer of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, is hereby authorized to order that any animal he or she believes to be in distress be removed from service until cleared for return to use by qualified veterinarian. A violation of this subsection is hereby deemed a misdemeanor and is punishable by a fine of not less than twenty-five dollars and not more than one hundred dollars plus court costs. Furthermore, violations of this subsection shall additionally be grounds for suspension and/or revocation of the franchise by majority vote of the city council. Section seven, subsection four point two eight point one zero shall be amended to read as follows. At any time the requirements of four point two eight are not complied with, the franchise is subject to suspension or revocation. Should that be and/or revocation?
It needs to be, I think it's fine as it is.
The city council may at any time, and it's on initiative or upon the petition of any resident or property owner of the city, review any franchise at any regular or special meeting of the council upon at least seventy-two hours prior notice to the franchisee of the time and place that the permit will be reviewed and the reasons for such review. If the majority of the members elected to the city council finds after the franchisee has been granted an opportunity to be heard, that the permit shall be suspended or revoked as the case may be, subsuspension or revocation shall not occur unless the majority of the council finds that the franchisee is not in compliance with provisions of this article and/or that subsuspension or revocation is necessary in order to preserve public health, safety, peace, and/or welfare. Section eight, the following subsection shall be added to section four point eight, false statements. Any person who knowingly makes a false statement of material fact to the city council with regard to any hearing or application is hereby deemed to have permitted a misdemeanor punishable by a fine of not less than five hundred dollars and not more than one thousand dollars, thank you, Nathan, plus court costs. Furthermore, violations of this subsection shall additionally be grounds for suspension and/or revocation of the franchise by majority vote of the city council. Section number nine, repeal clause. All ordinances, resolution, and parts thereof in conflict herein or herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
What was the number they gave us?
Mr. Vida.
Look to approve ordinance twenty-one fifty-four on its first reading.
Second.
Discussion, please?
We're going to. Go ahead.
I thought we read it for discussion.
We placed it on its first reading.
Gotcha, thank you.
Good. So we're a real call.
I'm just curious, with the franchise agreements, are we trying to apply tighter restrictions when we do regular business owners with their business license? I'm curious of why we are necessarily concerned about the franchise applicant stating whether or not he is the owner, or if the carriage or horses are subject to any lien, and if so, in favor of whom. I think that would be like considering any business license, asking if they own their office, or, you know, if so, if they don't own it, how much do they owe, who do they owe it to? And I'm just curious why in this process for the franchise, we're requiring that much in-depth financial information.
Anything, anything on that one?
It has been an issue.